Let me see if I go live. Let's see if it does it. Okay, let's try it.
Grandpa.
Okay, I think we're live. I think we're good.
All right, let me go check and just make sure.
If not, I might just have to hit go live on this, but it looks like it's counting down down there for the last four minutes, so I think we're okay. Can you hear us?
I was gonna say, somebody needs to talk.
Yeah, somebody needs to talk.
Have anybody watching?
Oh, let me go back to that one.
Probably two.
We got it. Nobody else is on yet, but if you can see it, then we should be okay.
Yep, I can see it. I can hear it. So it's all good.
Okay. All right.
All right. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Everybody ready? Ready, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, February first, 2022, at seven sixteen P. M. Apologize for being a little late, but we wanted to make sure our live stream is working. And hello to any residents that are watching. Okay. Second order of business, roll call.
Councilman Nielsen.
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Present.
All of council present, along with our fiscal officer, Angela Rovey, and our law solicitor, John Montello. And we also have our chief of police here tonight, Stan Jaworski. Okay. Item three, we have this item on the agenda. It's jail discussion. I'm gonna have chairperson of the safety and insurance committee, Mary Brenner. You can lead that discussion and then we can all chime in or do what we need to do.
Come on.
Are you gonna have the chief come?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mary.
I was just gonna give a real quick synopsis of our meeting, and if I'm incorrect, you stop me because I was writing as fast as I could. And then I figured you could go over more in depth what we discussed. It was brought to my attention that our community is losing about one million dollars a year in open warrants that aren't being collected. And so I'm the head of the chair of the safety committee, so I went to talk to the chief and also the jailer, Steve Davis, and find out what we could do to remedy this and if a grant possibly could be put into place to upgrade the jail. Our jail is open, but it's on a six-hour facility, so it's kind of, I hate to use the term like catch and release, but that's pretty much what it is. It's not the twelve-day jail that was enforced before. And that's when chief here explained to me that it's been since, what, 2016 or so that we've been in multiple violations? And there's at least ten or more, and it goes everything from changing out the doors to making the cells bigger. Also, one of the things that struck me was they want outside recreation available to the inmates. It's starting to sound more like the state is mandating, or I should say legislating, for prison in lieu of a jail. Jail is a deterrent. It's a small holding type of facility in my mind where a jail is a long-term, you're there, facility. But even if we funded and got grant money, there would be so many changes that would have to ensue. It doesn't seem viable, you know, to make it worth the village's while. But the main point was the one million dollars, 1.1 million dollars that was outstanding, and correct me if I get this right. The amount that is calculated at that is the actual bond, which is ten times the amount of the actual cash that you need to get out. So it's 117,250 dollars, not 1.1 million dollars. And that we do have something in place when the clerk of courts, before they are let out, they put a warrant on their driver's license and their.
That's if they do not show up for court.
If they do not show.
She puts a warrant out and then she'll put on their driver's license and their plates. So that in order for them to go to B and B and obtain those, they have to come to Walton Hills and post the bond. And then when they do come to court, she'll lift it. So it seems to be working in that. It might take some time. Most people do pay it. There's, you know, the person that drives under suspension all the time and they keep driving and they don't worry about it. But back in 16, 17, and 18, when we had the jail inspections, we were in violation. In, I think it was April of 18, I had spoken to the inspector from Department of Rehab and Corrections, and he said it would be to our best interest to go down to a six-hour holding facility. Then, you know, we would be in compliance. And every year since then, we get a certificate from them saying that we are in compliance as a six-hour holding facility. North Royalton, as you see, they closed down their facility. Valley View shut theirs down. Twinsburg. Bedford. I talked to Chief Stempel last week. I'm just waiting for a letter to show, you know, say that they did shut it down. They're only open from, I think, Monday through Friday is when their court is open, and then they're taking everybody over to Solon to house them.
It seemed like there was many hurdles to overcome to have that. And if it was gonna be, even if we got the money, the grant money, if it was financially in our best interest even to upgrade the jail, where now you have to, everyone has to be trained to be a jailer. You don't have one jailer. Possibility of taking people off the road to have to be in the jail. So you have to weigh all the options.
If we're unable to have a jailer come in, an officer, like if we brought in somebody under OBI, an officer would have to check on him or a jailer every 10 minutes. So that would take somebody off the road and then if we did not have a jailer at that time. So by doing that, I mean, if we have two officers working, that means an officer's coming in every 10 minutes to check on the prisoner.
So when the chief and I and Steve had our meeting, you felt it was in the village's best interest if we apply for a grant, it would be for something else. You know, keep the six-hour detention in lieu of trying to go through a whole lot of financing and building, and we'd lose three jail cells to two cells, and it's not really the way to go.
It's not a moneymaker.
It's not a moneymaker, no.
The mayor's court, we don't, our magistrates do not sentence anybody to jail time. It's just fines. Usually, if they do not show up for court, you know, we'll put a warrant out for them and the bond setting will be the 3,500 dollar surety bond or 10% cash. So then when they come to court, usually the fines and contempt of court are built into it and that. So usually it's a wash. It'll be 350 dollars. They'll take care of the fines, contempt of court, and they're on their way. And then Nancy will take the, can't remember what we call it, but so they can get their, obtain their license and license plates.
Right. Okay.
A warrant block, that's.
Okay, that was, yeah, the block, yeah. But thank you. If anybody has any questions or anything, I wanted the chief to be here because he can speak on this much better than I can. I think your recommendation was that we apply for a grant that would benefit the entire village rather than try and recreating the wheel and putting an outside basketball hoop outside with a fence around it so we can have a 12-day jail and it's.
And then where's the bathroom? Have a shower and a kitchen area. That's, you know, not within code either. Everything would have to be inside the jail itself. And we don't have the room to, you know, to expand.
Did I read too that you had to have a physician on?
Yes.
That's we're saving money too. It was costing us 350 dollars a month for Dr. Felton at Bedford Hospital. It was like on a retainer. So now, you know, if we take them over to Solon, when we were taking them over to Bedford, it was 85. Solon's 110. So I can house, you know, three guys at Solon now and still come out ahead, you know. I mean, then you have to have a dietitian. You have, you know, we have to get food from either Walton Manor or.
Sounds like we're doing all right.
Or the hospital, right. Years ago, we used to go to McDonald's and they would eat three meals a day, you know. Purchase lunch and dinner at McDonald's, but not anymore.
That's where I said I feel like the state is legislating this to be more of a prison rather than a jail. Because that's, in a prison, that's how they run it, not like our little place.
And then years ago, on Thursdays, we had visitations from seven to nine, and then we'd have to have an officer come off the road. Now they're saying that they have to be partitioned. They can't have contact with the individuals, so we'd have to have a visitation room for them. So there's a big expense to jail going, I mean.
Maybe we could make a drawing with the fence around the town hall, how it would look with the barboard.
I have a couple of questions, chief. One of the questions I had is, you may not have this on the top of your head, but in an average year, even with the six-hour detaining, detainment facility, how many, how many, how many people or how many times are we actually detaining over the course of the year, the typical year?
I don't, I'd have to look at that. I couldn't give you an answer.
Is there somebody there like every day?
No. For driving under suspension and that, it's just citation release. Because it's a non-classable offense, so you just, it's give them a citation, give them a court date and, you know, for them to show up.
So the current, currently, what we have works, okay. I had another, I had another question. I just wanted to get some, I wanted to get some clarification on the actual open warrant report. Is this, is this, this warrant report that we have that we initially talked about the one million dollars down to 117, is that per year or is that an accumulative over a period?
Because if you look, it says total open warrants is 335.
Right.
And then it says bond amount, and it'll say the 3,500 dollars. That's a surety bond. That means you go through a bondsman and they post the bond.
Right.
So when we bring somebody in, we tell them it's 3,500 dollars surety or 10% cash.
But this goes, this, this report goes back how far? I mean, how many, how many, how many years does it, is this collected to get to this, even as 117?
That I do not know. We'd have to.
But this is not like one year. This is not.
No.
So, or, I'm sorry. Continuing off of that question, there's 335 people or total number of open warrants. So if I'm reading this correctly, there's 335 people that have an open warrant. And it says times 350 dollars. Is that correct?
No, it's times 3,500. It's shown. If you look, it says total bond amount. That's where you get the 1.1 million dollars. That's surety. That's not a cash.
The cash is the 350.
Right, it would be 350. So if you multiply 50 dollars cash times the 335, that's where you come up with the 117, you know, 117,000 dollars.
Right, so but, but a bond is to ensure.
Right. We don't make, we don't get anything on a bond, okay? When we bring somebody in and we tell them a 3,500 dollar bond, they'll call a bondsman, and they'll pay, somebody will come in and sign for them and pay a certain percentage. Okay? We don't get nothing from that, okay? So if a person posts a 350 dollar cash bond, whatever their fines might be, they can at least apply that 30, or the 350 dollars to their fines.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that. Back up to if they go through a bondsman, why don't we get any money from a bondsman?
Because the bondsman is putting up their money to ensure that that person comes to court.
But they're putting it up to whom?
It's a convenience for the.
Hold on. They're putting it up to whom? Aren't they putting it up to us?
So if they do not show up for court, then they'll go after them.
Well, I know, but if, well, if they can't find them, we keep the money, right?
No, it goes through the bonds person.
I don't get that at all.
John, can you? I don't know. When it comes to.
Because that's between the, when, when the judge says your bond is this, right? The community then. I know, I understand they don't get the whole amount, but they get something from the, from the bond, bondsman, don't they? In order to release that person. If they're not getting any money saying that.
They're just paying them to guarantee that.
They're guaranteed that that person will be there.
Their verbal guarantee?
No, it's, they'll go after them. We've had people come in with a bounty hunter that brought them in, that they've been looking for them for months. And then, you know, it's been a while ago, but it has happened. But we don't get any of that money if I'm correct, John, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's just to guarantee their appearance. If you want to cash, it's like an insurance policy, they're coming to court. You can go after the bonding company to pay the money that they guaranteed to have the prisoner appear, but it's, it's not really a mayor, mayor's court function. It happens more at a common police court level or a municipal court level. We, I couldn't tell you any mayor's courts that actually pursue the bonding company, but it's possible. Don't get me wrong.
But I think what Brian's asking is that do we get the fines from the person that they got the DUI, they get their 3,500 dollar sure rebound, they pay the 350 dollars to their bondsman. We get the 350 dollars eventually after their court date. Do we not get their fines that they pay to the village?
They still have to pay their fines to the village. The money they put up with a bondsman, that's.
That's the bonding.
Bonding company's money.
That's in, that 350 dollars goes towards their fines.
No, no.
That's a problem for them, saying, you know, how many surety bonds do we have here? Probably 10 a year.
Yeah, if, yeah, we don't use bonds, yeah.
I mean, but, but that money is the insurance premium for them.
So if they skip out, we get nothing?
Right, exactly.
So.
So as long as, as long as that bondsman makes sure they showed their bond up to court, then we get their fines after they pay all their fines. But if they skip out and go to California.
We're just out that.
We're out that money.
Correct.
So.
That's crazy.
So if they just tell you, I can't pay any, anything, we can only hold them for six hours and then we just let them go?
You're talking on a warrant?
Right.
Right, because if we take them, usually that's all our Walton Hills mayor's court warrants.
Well, we could keep them. We could send them to Solon jail or county jail or a different jail.
But we have to pay those facilities.
We have to pay, right, we have to pay to house them.
And hopefully they would come up with the money, but it's, it's just our, the state of our society today is not to keep people in jail for minor traffic offenses, which is rightfully so, I agree. So they, they let them out on a personal bond. They don't, they don't house prisoners, even if they, you know. I don't even think these 3,500 dollar bonds are, are legal anymore. It's dictated by the municipal court. I think, I think we're instructed by the court now, correct me if I'm wrong, to just release them out of.
Release them.
You can't even impose a bond. If there's an existing warrant that right now, we have a bond set, you know, they may come up with the money, but technically speaking, I think we gotta release them. But I don't want to get too much in, in, you know, in a public meeting here about that. But anyway, it's, it's, it's not, the system is not, it's to, it's to help people, not to hurt people.
I could say.
I think it's about keeping people, people making them pay society back for their.
Well, I get you. As soon as that viewpoint, and I'm not saying I'm against it, but you know, it's, 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 it's the state of our society.
Okay, so what you're saying is there's 335 people that owe 350 bucks apiece that have skipped out? Or in some faction owe us that money for the 117,000 dollars?
That's what their bond.
I understand.
Right, right. It could be less too. I mean, if it's a speeding ticket and somebody doesn't show up, then, you know, it's a couple hundred dollars in fines and that.
But they haven't gone through the process.
Right, they haven't gone through the process.
They may not even owe the 350.
Right.
Eventually, they could be found out guilty. They could, you know, we could negotiate a lesser deal. Normally, if we do get a bond post, then we, we keep that money. Don't get us wrong. I mean, that, you know, they don't charge them anymore because, you know, it's a fair price for the, you know, driving.
Well, sure, yeah, that, yeah, that's a different subject. I'm just, yeah.
But this, this figure is, you know, it's, I don't. I get why you're questioning it because it is a lot of money, but in reality, it's not money owed to the court or the village. It's, it's just to guarantee their appearance to court. And it was, you know, a lot of these outstanding warrants are probably from years ago. You know, and eventually, it's like credit. People, people wait till they get caught and then they settle up when they get caught. You know, sometimes they go up 350 or sometimes they don't have the money. If we want to keep them in jail, like you say, we, we could keep them in jail to see if we could finesse them to get some money. But, you know, it's, it's, it's just, you know, you know what the temperament of society is today. It's, it's, and again, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying it's right, but it is, it's the nature of, you know, our, our, it's not to punish people for minor criminal charges that, that for people that can't afford it in the first place is why they're in the position that they're in. You know, so they mean if they can't afford insurance, they can't afford to get their license. So the society, the municipal courts have, have, have reduced the bonds and, and have let them, let them go. You know, we try to be a little more aggressive to get them to pay the money, and a lot, and sometimes it works, but most of the time. And for example, if they get caught in Columbus, are we gonna send an officer down to Columbus to arrest this guy so that maybe, maybe he pays the 350 when he gets back here, you know? And we probably can't afford it anyway, you know what I'm saying? It's, you know, we don't have the, it would cost us more money to pursue these bonds.
Well, when you recover.
Yeah, but when we, absolutely.
Angela, you got a comment?
Yeah, and see, I correct me if you believe I'm wrong, but just in terms of paying bed for jail over the course of the year, I would say we've probably had about 30 people we've even sent over with a maximum holding of three days. So it's not, it's not that there's even a lot of money going out for us to pay for them to be housed elsewhere either.
And what is that amount?
And mostly those were from Garfield Court.
Yes, exactly.
Probably 95%, if not more, was from Garfield. It wasn't our court.
Gotcha.
Now, if we had 20 cells, we might be able to make it profitable without, to pay somebody, you know. To run a 12-hour, 12-day facility, you have to have somebody here 24 hours a day. You know, and most of the times, like you said, well, how many prisoners we have a month? I don't know. I would guess three or four, and most of them are OBI's. And some, most people do come up with the bonds to get out. But if they don't, you know, most of them do, I gotta say. But, but some of them don't, and we have to resolve the case quickly because otherwise we're paying for them to stay here and, or we have to send them somewhere else to pay for them, you know, to be in jail, so. But again, the bond schedule, bond reform is a big topic in, in our society today. You know, that's, that's the prevailing, prevailing view in our society today. It used to not be that way, but it is now. Even the Supreme Court has dictated to mayor's courts and municipal courts to not, you know, not, you know, to release people for minor traffic offenses.
Chief, I'm sorry. When Nancy was explaining to me about the warrants and stuff and, and that it wouldn't, you know, it's difficult for the cost of it because if we went and picked them up in North Royalton, we could only bring them here for six hours and then we would just have to let them go anyway. But now we are agency only, I believe she said, so it's, they're only being told or notified or brought in when, they're only being brought in when they're in Walton Hills. But what happens if they get pulled over in North Olmsted? And there's a warrant out for them?
Well, dispatcher let us know and the officer in charge or the sergeant will tell that department that it buys and release. And because time you send an officer out there, you're talking a half hour, 45 minutes.
Right.
And then back, and then you have a half hour. Now you're taking two officers off the road to book the prisoner in. So it's.
And then they're still only here for six hours anyway.
If they can't post the bond, a lot of times, you know, we'll get, county will call us and say, okay, you know, we have a warrant out. We put a holder on the guy, but he just spent 30 days at county. Of course, when you, you know, we go to pick him up, he's not gonna have any money because, you know, he doesn't have a job. And if he did have a job, he lost it because he was in county for 30 days or better. So they're gonna.
And there are a couple of these other communities.
Right. I mean, there's times, you know, we'll get, you know, when we run somebody and stop somebody, they'll have three, four warrants. And then we'll try to call somebody who's close and that, that'll, you know, might want to pick them up. But due to COVID and housing and like Bedford Heights jail, they shut down. I mean, it used to be a 200-plus jail that county was running, and they shut it down because of, you know, the cost and personnel and so it's not a moneymaker. It's.
And as, with these violations, we'd have to go from a three cell to a two cell, so it's even less.
Number one cell we can't even use because it's way too small. Two and three, we would have to expand the walls out.
Right. So.
So chief, the other question I had was Nancy had said something about that the warrants drop off after two years?
If you, if you don't go get them after, if you know where they're at and you don't go get them, technically, the warrant should be dismissed. In, in reality, it doesn't happen, but we keep the warrants out for longer than two years. Although she, she may, she may, I'm not sure if she does or she doesn't, but she may review it every two years and, and recall the warrant. But that's probably the correct thing to do, but I haven't researched it in a long time. But if, if there are people, for example, if John Montello owes the village 500 dollars, you know where I'm living, you don't come get me for two years. You know, there's a law, there's a statute of limitations, so to speak, so that you're supposed to go get the person. If you know, you're supposed to make an effort to go get them, which, which, you know. But again, at the time and effort that you exert to go find the person is, you know, it might way you have to take people off the road. I mean, if there's somebody that owes us a lot of money, perhaps we would do it. But it's just the prevailing attitude through all, all communities is they don't do that. I don't know one community that does.
So chief, then, I mean, are we just getting away from jails altogether if all these communities are not doing that? You know, is, is that the way that it's going in all of these communities specifically with these types of violations or?
Solon is still, you know, we have a contract with them, so we're still able to take them there. Maple Heights will take them if we're in a pinch, so.
Well, it's a serious crime.
Crime, right.
If it's domestic violence or if it's a theft, then, then we might rethink our process. But one of those cases are sent automatically to the municipal court because they're more serious. So, but, you know, but, you know, if we can find funds, they're, you know, update our jail in some way that doesn't cost us anything, just for the six hours and so. It's not a bad idea to update it, but there are funds available to do, I don't know if it's just for, if it's just for a certain 12-hour facility or like you say, a prison or, you know, I mean, if, you know, but if there are funds available to update the facility, that's.
Well, it said municipal and community jails, which was one of the other thoughts that I had and wondered if all of these communities are getting away from their facility in combination with the fact that we have two properties in the industrial parkway, is a possibility of a community jail, like, like the SEAL, you know, communities going together and creating something like that together?
The cost of having a new jail built compared to.
I would oppose any jail going in our industrial.
Yeah. Well, I'm not talking about a prison or a county jail.
I don't even want a prison in our, I don't even want a prison in our.
No, no, not in an industrial park.
If council pushes it that way, I'll waste my opinion.
I'm just asking about the possibility with the federal money that's out there for these things and that we are only at a six-hour facility. So I'm trying to bring the conversation forward so we can have all the information and make an informed decision.
Well, we're talking about our jail is different than a, a separate jail in our industrial parkway. Updating our jail downstairs, I agree. Updating our jail downstairs, I agree, that's always good conversation.
It's true.
A freestanding jail in our industrial area, I, I, I don't want to be part of that discussion.
Stan, Chief, what's your take on something like that with the communities together?
Uh, back in December, we had our chiefs meeting and we had talked about in the near future maybe doing something with Bedford Heights because it's all up to date, you know, it's sitting there. County's still paying Bedford Heights monthly, you know, and there's nobody there. But you'd have to figure out what the cost would be and, you know, per city and, and the number of people, how they, you know, who would actually run it? Would it be all seven SEAL communities or Bedford Heights would take it over again and then just charge the other six cities to house them? But, you know, there's a big cost, you know, you need twenty-four, seven jailers and, and you need, you know, the whole, everything, dieticians, doctors, and so there's a lot to consider about, you know, opening up a jail, prison or, you know.
It's not exactly.
I think we're gonna do well as the Ford plant, the former Ford plant gets developed and our industrial area that catches on, we will make revenue in, um, in a, in a different, different way than, than going in that direction. That's just my.
Right now, we are in compliance, as you can see, you know, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. We're in a process of doing twenty-one, that we are in compliance with the jail standards for the state.
Are there any other questions?
I'll just make one quick comment. There's so many vacant jails already, they, you know, to build a new one. I mean, it's, I mean, in a perfect world, that would be good, but maybe not in Walton Hill, but the.
Exactly.
But, you know, even the federal prisons are run privately now, I think you guys have heard, you know, it's, it's, it's people by, by private entities. So it's, it's becoming, you know, the, you know, a industry in that regard. But, but there's someone like, like the Bedford Heights Jail, if that's ready to go, but they decided, I think the county considers all these things you're bringing up, you know, and, and they've made the decision not to open the Bedford Heights facility. And I don't think the Yucca facility either, they, they're because of the same reasons we're talking about not going against prisoners, it's, it's not economical. They've only decided to keep the, the, the county jail open downtown, you know, because there's not a need for it at the present time. There's another thing, the need for it. I mean, I get, I get it, we, you know, I, I, I'm not saying that I'm not, you know, that, that some criminals need to be punished, but I think we, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of jail space already and it's not being utilized for whatever reason. I'm not saying, you know, it's just a, that's the way, because of COVID, number one, number two, you know, the, the thought process of the, 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 uh, the, the United States these days is, you know, to rehabilitate rather than to punish. So there's, there's, there's no, I, I get what you're saying, it's not a bad idea, I'm not saying you have a bad idea. I mean, there are good questions that we, you know, it's good that we're having this conversation, but, you know, there's other, you know, we're not the only ones having these conversations, I guess is my point.
Chief, is there any idea what it would cost just to bring us into compliance for a, I mean, is there a shorter term? Is it strictly six hours or twelve days?
Correct.
That's it?
Either a six hour short term or you're considered, you know, a jail.
Mm-hmm.
Like I says, there's, it would cost us a lot of money, plus we don't have the room to expand as, you know, I explained before and by taking them over to Solon, our, if we arrest them through village ordinances and that, you know, that's where we're bonding them out and where, you know, if they go to Garfield, we can get them into other facilities, like, you know, if we have a domestic and that, we just call Solon and say, hey, you know, we need them. There's no bond till Monday, just happened on a Friday night.
Hmm.
Can you house them until Monday morning till he goes to court, you know, then Monday morning, we'll send an officer over there, pick him back. I'll bring him here, we'll do a Zoom, uh, trial or pre-trial and then, you know, then we'll release him from here, but.
So as it stands right now, we are fully compliant for the six hour?
We are in compliance. We have the, like I said, there should be certificates in there.
I have certificates, yes, that we're giving to me.
That are in counties for eighteen, nineteen and twenty, except we're working on twenty-one now.
Boy, have to be, otherwise we wouldn't be able to house the people like we have.
Right. Anything else? Anyone else?
Uh, Chief, Mr. Mayor.
Wait.
Thank you. Uh, with the information that Ms. Allen brought forward, are there any ideas specifically towards our cells and updating our cells that you could use that money for? The ideas that you may have that, uh, in specific, that, that you looked at that and said you, you could use this money for this?
Like I said, as a six hour holding facility.
Yeah, as a six hour.
We, we don't need to update, we don't need to, you know, if we wanted to spend money, like I said, it was around seventy thou, sixty-five, seventy thousand to redo the doors.
Okay.
Um, they all have to be, you know, with the key fob and that, because right now we have regular keys and that's in violation, you know. Uh, every officer had a key on their key ring to go into the booking area. And then, you know, the cell doors itself are updated, you know, you've been down another big cast iron, uh, gates and that, that you just slam it at, I mean, that would all have to be updated. So, like I said, as of now, with a six hour, we are in compliance.
Okay, thank you.
If that's all there is, I want to thank you so much for coming and, um, if there's any other questions, you can either let me or the Chief, no.
Any, any questions from any residents related to item three?
Can I be like Otis on Friday night?
I was thinking the same thing.
Years ago, we used to, we had a gentleman down there for a year and a half. And Monday through Friday, we got him a bike, he'd ride his bike to work and then he'd come back at five o'clock. He was on a work program.
I spent many a days washing police cars out back there in an orange jumpsuit.
I don't believe you.
I know all about this jail.
They're not attractive.
That's why he won't come up to the mic.
You can't even let, they can't even do that anymore. They can't, you can't have a prisoner do manual labor anymore.
No, we can't, no.
They even wash in the police cars. I mean, I remember growing up as a kid here in the village, every Saturday, you'd see, you know, you'd see the prisoners out there washing the police cars.
Washing wax and cars.
Yeah, I mean, we had the cleanest police cars, I think, in town out there. Because they were getting washed daily, tires shined, everything. And I know I was responsible for a lot of that too. We won't go there.
Any other questions from council or?
No, just thank you, Chief, for everything.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you to the resident.
We're good with residents. Karen Rimming has said she's in. Each week, there's some things that come up that I kept questioning, like if it was someone from outside of it. Almost looks like someone who's typing in another language. That's probably your resident? Do we know who that, okay, so.
No, I don't know who that is.
You know what I'm talking about though. So hello to whoever that is, you know, now that I'm looking at it, I'm like, okay, that's a different language for their, for their name, so.
I think it's somebody not a resident.
It may not be a resident, but.
I think it's somebody on YouTube.
Could be, but they don't have me.
Could be a hacker too.
Yeah.
Somebody could look at the punishment.
Or hacker, be careful of that.
Yeah, well, it's not even anything, oh, but it's just a comment.
It's just a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not anything.
It's a single, not even a sentence, right?
Like, yeah, like.
Okay, are we ready to move on to item four?
Yep.
Any comments related to agenda items? I went through that. Any comments from any residents here or?
No.
Okay. Other business, um, does anybody have anything under other business they'd like to talk about? I have a few things, but mine are short. I don't.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just to bring the entire council up on our recreation committee meetings, we've had two now, one just here a little bit ago. Uh, we've been discussing the Parker Program, Parker Program fees. We're gonna have another, Angela, another meeting next, uh, Tuesday before the COW and hopefully we can make a recommendation, that would be at five thirty, if that's okay with the rest of the committee members, to, uh, make a recommendation to the, uh, whole of COW as far as fees for the Parker Program for this year, the time, schedule and things like that. Uh, and we'll bring everybody up to speed on what we come up with at that meeting. We were discussing, uh, the rental of the event center rooms, uh, changes with, uh, some specifics as far as the rental contract, having a security officer there at all the functions. We did agree that the wording that is currently in the, um, ordinances as far as the police chief and or, uh, or his or her designee could waive that requirement based on, you know, the specific function that's going on up there. They, they have the authority to waive that.
Keep that in and.
Yeah, so we would keep that in.
Okay, I, I do want to object for, I didn't want to labor in, in your meeting there, but I think that's something, you know, maybe with the committee, we'll discuss after I discuss with the police chief a little bit. And the reason I say that is, I don't know if we want to get the police chief involved in the rec department. If we, for say, okay, now you've got these rentals, especially if you decide to rent it to non-residents. And now the police chief has to take away from that, decide by looking at this, do you see what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say?
Yeah, but he's in there now. He's in there now.
But if we, if we strengthen up, I just want to get an opinion.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would say.
Safety director, I want to, I want to see, excuse me, I want to, I want to see if we're better off putting in some kind of ordinance, like just saying it's required all the time or, you know, because it, it all changes. The big decision is, is going to be what you guys talk about, say, if you rent to non, if you rent to residents. Okay, let's say it becomes, and I'm not saying it's going that way, but whatever way, if it goes to residents and you have a baby shower and it's residents, do we really need a police officer up there? I don't, do, do we really feel we need to be part of that? We have a police officer at the lake club?
Well, that's what, that's what we were, the committee was saying, that they would just have the right to just waive that and say, no, you don't need a.
But see, but now you have the chief is making that decision.
Or their designee.
Or their designee.
Their designee could be anybody.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, so I just wanted to kind of.
Well, yeah, talk with the chief, I appreciate it.
I, I just want, that's all. I, I just, before I throw, you know, as I say to the director, before I.
One of his jumpsuits up in there.
I have that power, before I throw one of my directors in that position, I want to talk about them.
Well, he's already in that position, unfortunately, but understand what you're saying.
What do you mean he's in that position?
That's, it's already, that language is already in the ordinance.
The language is there, so they're required. They're either required or not required.
No, no, the language of the, no, the language of the police chief being able to waive is already in.
Oh, that part, yes.
Right.
But we want, you know.
If it's mandatory.
Mandatory, yeah. But, but, let's just get that.
Talk to him and, yeah, that's fair enough, sure.
That's, that's all. I, I, I would do that for any, any other, any employee that works for me before I, because I like to just see what they.
Absolutely.
Before agree on something. I just think that's the right way in my position to discuss it, to see which, give, get some input from that person. Is that the best way? And then bring it to you as council too and discuss it.
Well, but that's, that's what we were saying, is that language is already in there, that he has the ability to waive that and that we thought since it was in there, that was fine. I think the committees, and please tell me if I'm wrong, we said that that would be more a rarity, that that would be waived, that's how we would see it, you know, going forward. So that's, that's where the conversation was from.
No, no, I get that, but then I'm also thinking maybe we shouldn't have it in there. That's the other thing, that maybe we shouldn't have him in there at all. That, that's.
Well, he's been all along, unfortunately.
Right, but, but.
Yeah, we can, we can.
That's been, but that's been a little, there's, it's, it's the right thing for me to do, discuss it.
Sure, absolutely, sure.
My police chief.
Sure. Also, the, um, we discussed the Parker Program as far as, uh, hiring a couple of individuals, adults possibly, uh, teachers or people with some sort of, uh, background in childhood development, things like that, along with the counselors and they would be, uh, more of, uh, have more of a guidance role up there as far as making sure everything's running the way they should be and, uh, it should be and things like that. Um, and the thought was bringing in these people at either fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour and that's what the community that Natalie came from pays their people to do this. Uh, so I did, the question became, do we have to change two sixty to, to accommodate that? And, uh, we do have, as a matter of fact, we just changed two sixty, as a matter of fact, we changed, uh, at the end of December, Parks and Recreation AIDS part-time, we increased the top end from fourteen dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour. So that, if we put them under the, this title, uh, we don't need to do anything. Uh, and we'll, I'll let John think about that for a little bit and, uh, get back to me as, if that would be appropriate or not. Um, uh, we have, we're working on community interest surveys for programming. Uh, there's, there's a question, Natalie found that she still had the, the key for the Dunham Road Church and we used to have programming there for like after evening, uh, adult basketball and things like that. Now with COVID, they've restricted severely what they do, but maybe we can have a conversation with them, uh, you know, when this clears up, if they would like to do that type of programming with us again. Uh, and they used to offer that to us for, for nothing. It was a great deal. We had a great relationship with them. Uh, so, uh, we'll be conversing with them. Natalie did put a phone call to them and they have yet to, uh, call her back, but she's waiting on, on that. Uh, we do have a website for the rentals of the community or the hall rooms. Uh, that is a partially done, uh, site and we figured out, uh, where it is and how much it's costing us. I think it costs us a couple hundred dollars a year for the internet, uh, to be on the internet. But that need, that needs to be updated, uh, after we figure out if we're going to open up the halls to, uh, non-residents as far as renting them. That would change to how much advertising and things like that we have to do. Um, we're considering more programming, uh, up there and, uh, do we want to have more programming for the residents or do we want to rent halls? You know, so there's a mixture there and a, and a line there that, that we have to make that decision and, and recommendation. Um, uh, and we'll be working on, um, there, there are facilities up there for, uh, business programs as far as presentations, like a business wants to come in and have a business lunch with present, presenters and things like that. We do have large screen up there with Wi-Fi access and, uh, microphones and things like that. And I want to make sure all that equipment is, uh, good and in working order, which last I knew it was. Maybe we're having a little bit of issues, I think last time with the microphones at some point, but I, I don't know, I'll check that out. Uh, but, um, advertising that place more to businesses too, start out in Walton Hills with like a glossy, uh, uh, thing and maybe have them in the, in the lobby area also, so when somebody walks in, they're right there in the, in the thing, that that place is available for business, uh, gatherings during the day. Um, so that's another avenue we'll, we'll explore and things like that. Uh, so we got, we've got a lot on our plate that's still foregoing, that ninety percent of this isn't going to get done in the next month. You know, it's still a work in progress and, uh, we're plugging away at it. But we got to get the Parker stuff squared away, uh, by the end of this month. That's why we, we batted on another meeting.
So we can have it on the COW for next week and.
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Brian, um, if you tried the general number at the church on Dunham Road, I, I'm a member there and I know the secretary is ill.
Oh.
So if you want the pastor's number, let me know and you can call him direct.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Natalie has not gotten a call back, so now we know why.
Yeah, because, um, I just. Yeah, because I just, I'm on the prayer chain, and when something, somebody calls in or somebody's ill, I get an email, and unfortunately, it's pretty serious, since she got sick at work. And that just happened within a week, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you his number.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Question for Chairman Spisnagle. You mentioned about the survey.
Yes.
Is, in, in the midst of COVID and being in 2022, is that a paper survey? Is that a, I kind of maybe get into the weeds, is it online version or something like that?
It's, we're going to put it, I suppose we could put it online too, on our website for people to, to fill out, that would be a good idea to do.
Yeah.
But thank you for mentioning that, I didn't think of that.
I think it'd reach a lot more people if you, if there's a electronic version of survey.
Correct, yeah, good, good idea. We're, Natalie had originally made a survey, and it was geared towards the seniors in the program, so we're, we're gearing it towards everybody, you know, and, well, for example, what activity would you like up there? Of course, you can list your own thing, but there'd be a list of stuff and, and other boxes for, you know, children or adults or seniors, so we can get an idea of, you know, you may want something for adults, an adult dance, or a senior dance, or a kid, kids' breakfast, or whoever, whatever it is. So we can get an idea of the types of programming people would like. Hopefully, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, hopefully we get a lot of good responses. But Natalie is very much wanting to create some more programming up there. And again, creating programming on Saturdays and things like that, wrap your kids up, that creates that room not being able to be rented to begin with. So that building is an amenity for our residents, and, and if we use it more for this stuff, that's perfectly fine by me. So that's where we're at, and again, a meeting next Tuesday at five thirty. Thank you, Mayor.
So it's going to be before the COW?
Before the COW, yeah.
Anybody else have any, anything on their other business? I, I counsel first, Andy, I'll get to you, because I have some stuff for myself, like I mentioned earlier, that I want to do on other, other business. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did find out today, and I will be picking it up, I'm hoping that we will have it, possibly framed even, in time for the council meeting, but it was sent to a colleague of mine in Bedford. It is a letter from the White House congratulating Walton Hills on part of the Bedford Township's two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary this year, founding. So I just thought that was really neat. I know it went to Bedford and Walton Hills, you know, each got one, I'm sure Oakwood and Bedford Heights will also.
Yeah, I haven't seen ours. I didn't get it. No, I didn't get it.
Haven't seen it?
Yes, well, I, picture of it.
They didn't send us one. They might have sent-
We did, but it went to Bedford, so my colleague in Bedford, I'm going to get it from them. Because it was part of Bedford Township.
I don't want to send it to the mayor? The administration? Usually that's what the, usually that's what the mayor of Bedford would do.
Right.
Bedford Township?
Ask Stan why he's avoiding me. Kind of, kind of interesting.
Bedford Township being founded.
Oh, that one's a change, no. Yeah, that was two hundred years, yes, that's right.
That'd be nice, okay, we'd like to see that. Let's see, anybody else, anybody else have anything? Let Stan know that day.
I will. Will they be cautious with the COVID?
No, it's, it only puts some humor into it. What I have is, as you know, we have the zoning applicants, Mary has been contacting them, and we have slots, three of the interviews have been set up. The other one, we might have to make alternate times, it might not be available at that time, so we're going to contact that person and, and see what times work for them. So that would be in the next COW meeting, and I'll confirm that in case we have to adjust these times, and we, you know, look at the order. What Mary did, as we have in the past, she just picked everybody's, we had four applicants, picked everybody's name, and that came up with the time slots, they're eight-minute time slots, and we conducted the same, same way, same way we have in the past. With that, we have that, and then Tulip Lane's schedule, I know, sent that out to council, me and Ray talked a little bit about that. That's for the waterline and repaving, so that's going to take place this summer, which will be good. And then I know me and Ray talked a little bit about infrastructure, Rob's putting and Joe's putting, a list of projects together and things related to that that were outstanding, that we need to address, and working on that for the infrastructure. Mr. Jordan will put his report together for you, Fred, when, I know you decide when you're going to have your meeting. As, as far as that goes, the Ford plant, things, I can, I can discuss the, the letter, that's a-
Sure, sure.
That's a, and as we just, I have discussed with council, I did, along with Tom Jordan and our legal staff, I gave a letter of support, they're applying for Brownfield money with the state, and looking forward to that. As, you know, as we've discussed, there might be other things as we move forward, but this just was a general letter of support. So let's keep our fingers crossed that they get the grant money they're looking for. It won't stop the project, very, we're very excited about it. We've had many discussions this week, it's been kind of a lot going on with that, so it's a good, good positive thing. It's, each time I discuss and have discussions with the principals involved, I get more and more excited in, whether it's a long process or not, whether it's a short or a long process, it's going to be a positive for the village. It's really just a good, a lot of these things we talk about, and we're talking about in, in rec, you know, can we afford this, can we afford that? When we get our revenue, those, those things go away. And so I really want to make it positive, everybody here in the administration, we really got something to look forward to in the residents. So I just want to keep that, because it's a positive thing, we should be embracing it. I know I am excited about it, and I know everybody here is too, so that's about all I have on that, though, so. I'm, that's it for me, I don't know if anybody else?
We were talking about infrastructure, so let me backtrack. Karen Relling had a question, she said, do we have, did we get a grant to pave Alexander, and more specifically Walton to Dunham is actually what she meant? So as part of our road program, I'm trying to remember.
I thought we did, that is, I guess we did.
Yes, yes, we did.
Well, last I remember, we had half, half of it.
Right, right.
And he's waiting for the other.
So we were waiting for the answer for the other half.
That is correct, we are waiting for the other half.
The okay, the wait.
The, yep. And we will let you know, that is part, one of those things, Joe, where Joe and Rob and, and the infrastructure committee will be reviewing along the council. But we got our fingers crossed, Karen, we want that to have a nice, nice road there. Any other questions?
No other questions there.
You go, did, did you, everybody good? Any, any questions from residents? Come on up to the mic, Dan.
Harki, seventy-one twenty Hickory. Perhaps I was confused, but I thought that tonight was the interviews for the BCA. I keep prepared to do mine, is it all right if I just go ahead and do that, and then you can do the other ones when everybody else can make it? I mean-
No, we, I-
I thought from an email that I got that it was for tonight.
Yeah, I'll have to check, because from what I've seen, Mary sent out to everybody, it was for the eighth.
Well, maybe I made a terrible mistake, but as long as I'm here-
Oh, no, and it's not about that, we don't, you know, we're glad you, we're glad everybody applied.
As long as I'm here and I'm prepared to do it, is there any objection to me just going ahead and doing that, and you guys can make your decisions?
Well, the, the only thing, the only thing I'm going to, the only thing, thing I'm going to say to that is, it doesn't give the other, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I, I don't have a problem, but how we conducted them in the past, it gave the other residents a chance to be here for your thing. Now, the, the only thing with that said is, we are live streaming it, so that, that is the difference. Now, my question is, you can't make next week? Would that be the reason?
I'm not sure if I can or can't. I don't know what my schedule's going to be for next week, for sure.
Okay.
And it sounds like some people didn't know what their schedules were going to be either.
Well, no, we, we sent out an invitation, and they had things, so they were just asking, they were committed for that and thing. I don't, you know, it's not, none of it's about being confrontational or anything. If, if you guys are okay with it, I'm okay with it, and the reason why I would be okay with it, because they are live streaming it, we are live streaming, that person can watch it. If we weren't live streaming it, it, I would have a problem, because it would not give the other people an opportunity to be here. And if you couldn't make next week, then we would schedule it another time, and those people would know, and they would have an opportunity to come here. So I, I'm okay with it, if you guys are okay with it.
And I would say-
He would like to give, he would like to do his eight-minute interview, Ray.
I, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would disagree, I would disagree, not, not because it's Mr. Harkai, but I would disagree with live streaming any of the, the application, applicants. I don't think, I don't know if I'm comfortable in live, live streaming the applicants. Mr., we're going to question Mr. Harkai here, and then we have three more people coming in-
Oh, that's a good point, because they're not the same here at the same time.
Who are going to know what your questions are and, and things like that, and they would be better prepared than Mr. Harkai possibly.
That gives them, that, that, that gives them the advantage that I work on them to have if they want to take it.
But the only thing, Mr. Harkai, with that said, with that said, and I didn't think about it, is the committee tonight wasn't ready for it.
Yeah, that's how I feel, like I'm not ready.
And I will say this, what we did last time, we asked, and Steve, you were part of it, we asked the same, a lot of the same questions to all the same, same, same people.
I'm, I'm, Mr., I'm sorry.
Now, but I am in the position, because I did, Mary informed me tonight, that that other person can't, couldn't make it, and so she's going to contact them tomorrow, all myself, and see what we can do. The thing that I do know is, they're all residents that are interested in the position, so we want to be fair, and I want to be right to it. I mean, you'd want the same thing if someone else stood up here and said the same thing, you'd want us to, to be fair and, and to all the candidates, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Harkai, I don't feel it would be fair to you, to be honest with you, because I feel whatever you would say to me tonight, and I would take my notes, like I do during the meetings all the time, but it wouldn't be fresh in my mind with the other people next week. That's just where I'm at, along with the fact that I wasn't planning on any zoning questions or anything else like that tonight.
I have the, I have one of the emails, and I'll look to see, this was sent to the candidates, and I thought she sent the exact same form letter to him, to him, and I'll check to make sure yours, because it doesn't matter, but I know this one here, it does have the date and, and the times, so, but we want to accommodate everybody, just like she said to me that this person couldn't make it. The last thing I want to do is, and I'm sure this committee feels the same way, is not have a resident have that opportunity to, in fact, I think that the last time we did it, we had an opening, we had a resident that wasn't even here a long time, and somebody said, well, they shouldn't even maybe have the right, but we wanted to let them express. So how does everybody feel? I guess, thinking about it now, I'd rather set it up with the other candidates, because I'm going to have the same issue with that. And we want to do it at the same time, we can have the same questions, everybody has this, a fair opportunity, and that's why we pick names, because some people like to go first, some people like to go last, and we wanted to be fair, so we picked names out of the, out of a half. That's something different that we did have done. In, in fact, the interview process has been just very open and, and very transparent, and I think that's been the best way to do it. So we'll, I'll give you a call, or have Mary call you, and, and we'll work that out then.
So, so-
I hope you are here next week.
So, so the, so this is going to be next week, then, starting at seven o'clock? And each one is for eight minutes, and I'm number three?
Correct.
For some reason, I believed it was tonight, my mistake.
But it's, it's okay. It's not a, it's not-
I'll be here, I'll be here.
No, I know that. And if, if you couldn't be here, because like I said, I'm in the same position, one of the, one of them can't, one of the applicants can't make it, and it would, what would, if somebody says they can't make it that date, some people plan things a month in advance with their calendar, and you say, oh, you can't make it the date we picked, you're, you're no longer in the running? That's not fair.
So if someone says they can't make it next Tuesday, then it won't happen next Tuesday, then?
Well, it-
It may not.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope, I would hope that if they can't make it after they commit, it's because they have an emergency or they're sick.
Can you make it, just so we have your, your, you know, they'll know that you're coming in case?
Yeah, he already-
All right, well, you said you weren't sure. I'm planning to be here.
Yeah, Mary said you confirmed that you were going to be here.
I made a mistake on the date.
Oh, yeah, not a problem, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Better to be early than forget and be late.
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, I, I do want to read something into the record, if you will allow me to do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Walton Hills Event Center is an underutilized resource for our community. This group, which I'm going to mention the names in a few minutes, this group of Walton Hills citizens listed, have come together to suggest a series of recommendations to bring the center to a cost-neutral position, reduce the need to subsidize the center. With our limited view of the financial information, we see the center has not recovered costs for the past three years, covered costs for the past three years. Additionally, we have a large loan of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which must be serviced every year. In two thousand and twenty-one, Angela reported paying thirty-five thousand dollars as of October thirty-first on that loan. In two thousand and twenty, it was sixty thousand, in two thousand and nineteen, it was ten thousand. Each of us has noticed that the centers, that the center appears unused much of the time, with few community, community events and even fewer paid events. We have not been able to access a full calendar activities, of activities at the center, and have no insight into when the center is available for paid, a paid event. Given this situation, we are making a series of recommendations for your consideration to bring the center to a cost-neutral position, excluding servicing the loan. We ask you to listen to our full recommendations before discussion. Now, I know you've all seen this, and some of our recommendations have already been addressed, I give you credit for that. Marketing. It appears there is little marketing done to bring pay, in-paid events for either residents or non-residents. We recommended a multifaceted marketing plan to attract events. The plan includes advertisements in the neighborhood press, community boards, church flyers, the Walton Hills Journal, and the Walton Hills Owl. An outreach to Walton Hills businesses and beyond to utilize the center as a meeting location. To develop the website specific to the center. To provide a link online to include rates and public calendar where available dates, with available dates. Utilize the flashing sign at the Walton Hills Village Hall. Financial. Analyze all costs of the center to clearly understand the total cost to the village, including service department and police support. The center financial records should be broken out and reported at, at a minimum of quarterly, but at best monthly, to council and citizens. Reset rental rates to be comparable to similar centers in our area. Create an à la carte menu of offerings with charges attached to reflect actual costs. For example, cleaning, linens, setup, tear down, sound systems, facility tech, helpers, police protection, et cetera. Rental rates for residents can be discounted, however, à la carte offerings should be a standard. Community. Survey our citizens to determine- Community, survey our citizens to determine more ways to utilize the center for citizen enjoyment, and there's an addendum attached to this. Safety and minimizing complaints from the center. Provide police presence at the center for any paid events and the cost to be paid by renters. Install cameras both inside and outside the center, recording, with recording capability to provide additional security if needed. Cleaning company, have a cleaning company to sweep the exterior premises after each event to ensure a neat neighborly presence. Regards to management, hire a full-time operations manager with the following responsibilities. Marketing the center, staff personally, staff personally or with hourly help any events. Provide renters with full information costs and à la carte items. Serve as a positive representative to the village, maintain a close relationship with police and vendors. Recreation and responsibilities, supervise a summer recreation program, and if possible, a director and, and, and any hourly or volunteer recreation providers for, like yoga, et cetera. Source recreation providers as needed, utilize hourly employees as much as possible to reduce costs. Fill positions by Walton Hills citizens as much as possible, including using our teens for hourly roles as needed. Our initial recommendation is to hire a full-time operations director to manage all the duties listed above. However, we recognize the operations director, the operations director is suc- successful and significant increase in rental bookings. We anticipate the need and the funds to hire a full-time recreational manager to manage our busy summer season. The group of citizens listed below are eager to see the center become cost-neutral and a vibrant gathering place for our village. Currently, the costs are significant and could result in reduction, and result in reduction in funds for other needs in the village. We ask the recreation committee and our village council to develop a full-scale business plan to include timeframes, revenue expectations, staffing changes, marketing efforts, et cetera, and present this plans to our, this plan to our citizens at a COW meeting within three months. We encourage the inclusion of citizens in the development of this plan. Thank you for considering our recommendation. Frank DiMarco, Steve Velk, Lee Nielsen, Ken Mankowski, Sharon Orland, Joanne Rich, Stacy Ashford, Michelle Velk, Joan Schumkarik, Diane Canzoni, Denny Harkay, Melan Versick, Crystal Greenwell, John Orland, Patty Harkay, Audra DiMarco, John Nari, Mike Wulczakowski, Paul Rich, Sean McCormick, Dale Mankowski, Dee Mankowski, Phil Orland, Carl Manich, Victor Ashford, Joe Canzoni, and Debbie Pecar. And the addendum that we suggest, these are some comments from residents that are regarding possible, regarding possible activities at the center. Someone suggested daycare services, a spa day, exercise classes in addition to the yoga, craft events for kids, adult concert, adult concerts, and teen dance parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harkay. Anybody have any comments? Any residents have any comments?
No.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just a comment from the chair of the rec committee, which is me. We did get that letter, or it was an email, uh, which we, I've gotten a couple other emails with suggestions on it. And everything in there is what we're dealing with, we're doing it. So, uh, thank you for reading it, but, uh, your recommendations are taken, and the committee is, is dealing with all the information. And if you attended the meeting, which I know you did, uh, you know that.
I was gonna say nothing, because I thought, why read a letter that you sent when everything's been addressed or talked about? You had two meetings so far. A lot of these things weren't addressed, we were, we're, we're gonna say two years now in a COVID mode, okay? A lot of event centers weren't even open, have closed. And the big decision, and I'll say it publicly again, is whether or not that is gonna be a community center, an amenity for the village, or are you gonna run it as an event center? And the reason is, Mr. Rich, you know this on the zoning board, it's zoned, okay, for either a church, nonprofit, like us, or houses. Whether we wanted to sell it, can't be anything other than that, unless the zoning's changed, okay? For us, as Angela keeps stating and waiting for an answer from the auditor, we pay no taxes, property tax, on that facility, because we're nonprofit. We make so much money on that facility, and guess what? We'll be paying property tax. Then you're gonna have to overcome that property tax before you can break even or show a profit, let alone a full-time event center. Big decisions which you guys are thinking about, I'll state it again. I, I think what we should do with that is try a full year in a non-COVID situation, renting to residents and see how it goes. And I've said that publicly for over a year now, and I think it would be best. I just heard the committee, and I also heard Mr. Harkay and the members of your committee. I think, I didn't think of a couple of your emails, you called it a committee. So, I'm gonna, I'm very interested in your committee and how they meet and how they're structured, but that could be done at a later time. I'll talk to some members, I guess Paul, you're a member of the committee. That you want more events up there, and a lot of those events take place on Saturdays and Sundays for the residents. And like in Mr. Spitznagle's meeting, is, they talked about, okay, if we're gonna decide we're gonna have more events, which is great, we all understand that the, that it's underutilized, okay? It could be utilized more, just no different than our park. We go up there, you walk, and you see those ball diamonds, and it makes me sick, I just, you know, we were kids, we'd love to have a ball diamond like that, at least in my neighborhood, we would. But, so, you wanna have these Saturdays and Sundays filled up with the community events, but then you say you wanna rent it out every Saturday and Sunday for weddings to make money? Well, you both can't coexist. Either you rent it, or you have those things, or you find a balance, and that's what you're looking to do, trying to do. The thing is, it's a great problem we have, it's a positive thing up there, okay? Recreation, event center, something we didn't have, okay? Costs us very little compared to a lot of communities that are, are paying. You take our total recreation budget, including the note, we're probably $200,000, $300,000, if not triple that, under any community even our size for what they supply their residents. So, we're doing great, even if we go with, um, uh, you know, continue it just as, uh, a community center. But that's something they're looking about, nothing's been said, nothing's been, I can tell you this, what comes out of this committee and this council, it's gonna be more utilized. It's gonna be better for the residents. What comes out of your comments are gonna be better, okay? It's, it's all good, it's, we're getting back to more normalcy, people are taking the input, they're discussing it. It's a good thing, it's a positive thing, it's gonna get better.
And Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Anybody listed on that letter is welcome to call myself, the mayor, Fred Nielsen, Jennifer Allen, uh, with any suggestions. Uh, we have to be fiscally responsible, of course, and, uh, as the mayor said in the rec committee meeting, it's, thank goodness, we did not build a, a $5 million building as we were looking at.
Like the residents wanted.
The residents wanted.
Remember, they wanted it, it was even, it was even in our master plan.
And that, that poll was done statistically accurate by the county. That wasn't just a poll put out in, in one of our flyers. That was done by the county and analyzed by the county who do statistical analysis. And they wanted a, a, uh, community center, they wanted it. Uh, and the thing was where we were going to put it. The cheap one was $2 million with nothing in it, a very small building, was $2 million. Now, I don't, I've never heard anything about making TG Young Park, which is another, our recreational facility, become cost-neutral. We can start charging people for renting the areas in TG Young Park, I have no problem with that either. If we wanna start to make TG Young Park cost-neutral. That's part of our recreational facilities also. So, we are addressing all of these issues, we've had two meetings. Uh, it's not gonna change overnight, but we're making a lot of progress. We've talked about things we haven't talked about in a long time, uh, which should have been talked about, but you gotta start somewhere, we're, we're talking about it, and it, it is going to be better. Uh, whether it, uh, whether it will make money, I have no real, really no interest in trying to make it a profit center for Walton Hills. That's not why we did it, and, uh, I don't need a big, I don't need a big formal business plan to understand the dynamics of the finances of the place, to know that if we're gonna create recreational programming for the residents, you can't do two things at one time, like the mayor said. We can take some of those days that aren't being utilized and rent the facility, that's great. And that's what we already intended for. But you can't have a village event the same day you're having a wedding or a bar mitzvah or whatever you're having that day. So, um, you know, you, and Mr. Harkay, you asked to read your, your letter in my meeting, and I respectfully declined, and, and not because of, of not reading the letter, but you saw that we finished, now, we started a little bit late because we had a snafu, but, uh, I wanna get in and out of these meetings and do the work for the residents and progress. I, I, we got your letter, and I don't need to re, keep rehashing it at every meeting what your requests are. I know what your requests are, you said marketing, we're doing it. Outreach to businesses, we're doing it. Red, uh, we talked about it, the website, we talked about it, the flashing sign, talked about it. Rental rates, we're talking about it, survey, we're talking about it, we're doing it. Safety, police presence, presence, we just talked about it. Management, we just talked about it, getting another person in there into things. So, we're addressing everything that's in your letter. And another thing which I was going to respond to you, but I didn't, but I had heard that there's some people on that letter that did not see that letter and did not approve it before it came to us. So, I was leery of having that letter read out loud and having a resident's name put out there for the public that did not have final approval of that letter. Now, I don't know if that's the whole case, I just heard that. And if somebody that you name, uh, somebody that you named that's on that letter and they hear this, that's their issue with you and the committee, if, if, if they don't totally agree with your letter. But, uh, mostly it was because of the timing. I didn't wanna sit there and take 10, 15 minutes to go over something we already had, and as you see, we needed every minute in that meeting that, and we used it for our business. So, I appreciate, again, I appreciate your, uh, these people's comments, we're dealing with it. That's all I can say. I can't help you anything more than that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna say, we still have the letters that Sean gave all of us last week, plus the extras, they're still up here.
First of all, the, the document that you see is not a letter. It's a, a list of recommendations that a group of citizens thought carefully about to produce. Also, 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 I'm talking now.
Thank you, and we're dealing with it, we're not gonna debate, uh, we're dealing with it.
I'm talking, can I talk without being interrupted, please? I give you the respect of listening to you, now you give me the respect of listening to me.
No, I don't want any debating, I will rule both the out of order and call the meeting.
No.
Finish your comment, go ahead.
I have some other comments, and I want the respect of being able to say them.
You're not running the meeting.
The document, the document that you saw was born long before any of these discussions that happened in these meetings took place. Jennifer Allen was at a meeting at my home with several residents, and these ideas were discussed long before any of this ever came up. So, this wasn't born because you guys thought of it. We're just trying to help, is all we're doing. Also, Mr. Whedon, Mr. Whedon himself in a meeting said one time, you know, it would be a good idea perhaps to have residents, uh, get involved and input into these things. I thought that was a very good idea. And I know that, from what I heard, that there was, so far in the history of this village, there's never been a citizens' group, citizens' committee that got together with the administration to have discussions, to have a, a activity going on to produce some good results. I think it would be a good idea, perhaps, to allow that to happen. And for some of these meetings that you, you give yourself an hour, you give yourself an hour and a half to have these discussions, perhaps some of these meetings shouldn't take place in a public venue. Might not be a bad idea to have a, a roundtable discussion. You get some residents together that have an interest in making things work, you sit down and you talk, put ideas together and make a plan of action. I think that's a good idea, you don't have to do it if you don't want to, but I think it would be a good idea to try that. Would you be open to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I would be very open to that, as a matter of fact. I stated in one of my original emails to you that I, that if anybody wants to meet with me, we cannot meet as a committee privately, okay? It's against the law. We can meet for, um, uh, the body can meet for investigative reasons, like if we needed to go on site somewhere to look at something or whatever, but we can't kibbitz and have a meeting in the private, that, that's absolutely forbidden by law.
And we don't have to, we will, we have a way of publicizing it, we have a way of letting everybody know. Our job is for the whole community to have an opportunity to come here. And we even said, let's embrace it better, and we're live streaming it. We're live streaming it, so what, what is better than that? Anybody, they could sit home, and people could have sat home today and been part of Brian's committee. They could have been in their car, they could have been anywhere they want with their electronic device, and been, and not only that, they could have commented.
All right.
And, and by law, that's what we, we're supposed to do. We have to follow the, the, the Ohio revise code, the sunshine laws. Okay, so, so. But if you wanna meet with Brian, like you said, he's open to meet with you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, uh, before?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I said in my original email, or one of my original emails to you, if you would like me to resend it to you, I said I will be glad to sit down with, with the people on your committee and talk. And I explained, we can't sit down as a commi, as a committee, all three of us can't, or two of us can't meet together. Fred, uh, today said, hey, well, why don't we meet at the Bill Cholton, I said, no, Fred, we can't. He goes, oh, yeah, that's right, we're, it's, we can't do that. So, we can't, but I, I want, I want you, I want to, you to understand that I'm very willing to do this. However, we will, the committee members will take these suggestions, and we will run with it as the committee sees fit, okay? Nobody's gonna run our committee but our committee. And that's what I get, I get a very bad feeling that some people want to run our committee and tell us exactly what to talk about and, and how to do it. They're not, they're more than suggestions, and if you read your letter, um, part of it is more than a suggestion, uh, with coming up with financial reports every three weeks for, for, uh, or every month and, and all that stuff. So, I, I, again, I, I can't stress enough, I take those and I take them to heart, but we need to deal with them in our time. We've got a lot on our plate, you were at our both committee meetings, none of that time was wasted. So, we're talking about all this stuff. If anybody, if Mr. Rich wants to call me tomorrow morning, I'll talk to him as long as he wants to talk to me about anything, or anybody else on that list that you wrote, that, that you named. I don't have any problem with that, but I see no reason why you had to come up and read that letter for what? To waste, uh, 20 minutes? To waste 20 minutes? We got your letter, we're dealing with it. All you did was waste my time, that's all you did.
I feel like you're being disrespectful to me at present time.
I feel like you're being disrespectful and trying to bully me, and that ain't going to happen.
Well, you're such a tough guy.
Okay, we do have a comment from a resident.
We did have a resident comment. Lee Nielsen had also asked, is there a reason that there are not residents on a working committee for the event center?
Well, we don't need a working committee right now, we're dealing with it. If we need input, which, again, I always respect the input, many, you're welcome to come. What more can you recommend than what we already are dealing with? You put your recommendations in a letter, we're dealing with exactly everything you recommended. So, as we talk about it, you're welcome to come up, you're welcome to text in and write your recommendations. I mean, there's, what else do you want me to do? See the committee to this group and have you sit up here and just run the meeting and do it? I mean, I don't know what else, how to please a couple people here. I don't know how to please a couple people here.
I can say Mrs. Nielsen was probably on our first link because she said she tried to stream it and didn't.
Oh, and I apologize, Mrs. Nielsen, we had the stream, the stream did not work, the original stream, and there was a second stream. I apologize for that, that was a big snafu, and we have to work that out, it was a timing issue with YouTube.
If that ever happens, whoever's out there watching now, always just go back to the YouTube list, because even if we create a new link on premise here and can't get that out to the website, it should appear in your list when you type in Village of Walton Hills, that'll come up with the meetings. So, if you find you're not getting into one, and we may have had to recreate a meeting, a new meeting, you should see the new meeting listed there and be able to get it.
Good to know, because I couldn't find it, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I'm done.
Any other comments from any other residents? Or committee, or the council?
Just one brief comment, I just wanted to make a photograph of Chairman Spitznagle as it relates to the community center, which I, that's how I think of it. I think of it as a community center and events secondary. Just this past Monday, I had an opportunity to take my first bus trip. And it was, it was, and when we're talking about community life portion of that, just for my wife and I to be able to get away for a few hours on a Monday, you know, just from, you know, other responsibilities, and spend some time with other residents, it was just a great amenity to be able to have that. I don't know how many more bus trips I may, I may pay, but to be able to experience for myself and see what it means to some of our residents, it means a lot to me, just to have a personal experience, but also to see what it means to other residents, and I just want to thank the committee, well, the department, for providing those types of weekday outings. It was great.
Go ahead. Mr. Nielsen, do you have something to say?
No, I'm just going to say, that's what it's about.
And the thing is, we're finally getting back to that, you know, and I know even that some of the bus trips still can't, some of the places they want to go aren't accommodating because of where we're still at health-wise, but, you know, that's, it's coming, that's kind of what we're talking about, it's all positive things, it's just, I've never been to an event up there that wasn't great, they're all positive. Our senior lunches, our thing, they're all positive, they're just all, it's recreation, it's all good, you know? It's, that's what we got to stay focused on, and the committee's doing a good job of that. It's all positive, there's nothing negative about recreation, community life, you're helping people out. If people knew how many people we drive, and that's something you didn't touch base on, but I think it's important, people don't know the importance of that community life department, I know you guys do here, and I know a lot of our residents that use it, for people, especially the last two years, who had no way to get to their doctor, had no way to get into the grocery store, had no way even getting out of their house to keep their well-being, and we provided that. We had such great drivers that said, hey, I don't care that it's COVID, we provided that. As a member of this committee, we should all be proud of that. Nothing positive. We supported our residents' well-being. I felt good about that. Everybody here should feel good about that. Let's talk about those good things. You know how many communities, a lot of communities closed theirs down? They couldn't get the drivers. Why, they didn't want to pick someone up that might have a possibility, they were in a car that close to them, you know, or taking them to a doctor's office and exposing themselves. Our drivers did that, we did that. We have so many positive things in this community, it's unbelievable, and it's only going to get better, I'm telling you. This is the greatest community in County County. Great meetings, everybody, it's going.
Y'all continue.
Any other comments from any other council members? Any comments from residents? No comments there? Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment to the COW meeting for February 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brenner Miller, vote on the motion.
Councilwoman Nielsen?
Yes, Councilwoman Brennerilla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 8:50 PM, thank you, everybody.
It's safe from the store, man.
Okay, I'll send out 52 in the morning, it's done.
Hey, Fred. Yes, sir. I'm a good company with you.
What's that?
I'm a good company with you.
Make sure my ducks are everywhere.
You're a tough guy, too.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, no.
Because, you don't even, well, you'll probably send an email to everybody, but I can't open this, so.